Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now we will start the second half of our open study session with Bruce Kane in regards to 5G.
We all set? I want to thank the Dearborn Heights City Council for allowing this special session on 5G and smart meters. I also proposed a special session before the Dearborn City Council, which was not approved. I believe allowing me to speak about the dangers of these technologies shows that at least the Dearborn Heights City Council does care about our citizens because this is a very dangerous technology that they're getting ready to unleash on us. And I suppose the primary point that over my year or two of research in this, which really strikes me, is that the telecommunications industry admits that they have not tested the safety of this technology. And yet they're rolling it out anyway, you know? And I find it very scary because my background is in, I've been a systems analyst in healthcare for 30 years, and I worked five years in medical research, radiation physics. So I have some idea what the dangers of these frequencies are. And it just boggles my mind that this stuff is being rolled out now. Now, really, up to now, we've been using 4G, you know? But over the last 20 years, we've got almost half the planet with cell phones that are always emitting this radiation, as long as your routers and all your other devices. And really, a couple of months ago, I got one of these. This is a Coronet electro smog meter. I recommend people get this. And I just started testing, you know, we're just talking 4G now, we're not talking 5G. And I started testing my phone, my cellphone. I started testing my, you know, phones that I have, the wireless phones that we have in our house. I started testing my routers and, excuse me, I was just amazed at the spikes in radiation that occur when you do these things. For instance, when you turn on, when you call somebody, you know, like when it's connecting until about it makes a good connection, the radiation levels go way up, way up. And you've got young men carrying these things in their pockets all the time. I don't care, I've got grandchildren, I'm not having any more children. But this radiation is affecting, you know, males. And the fact of the matter is, and I don't know that if it's just because of 5G, but over the last 40 years, sperm counts in the United States have gone down 50%, you know? So you would think that would be a concern to the healthcare people in this country, but it doesn't appear to be. I'm going to read from this for a minute. I wrote this yesterday, but it's 26 pages long, and I know you're not going to sit through that. But "Both 5G and smart meters present a threat to our health, our privacy, and freedom. Certainly the threat these technologies pose to the health of our children should be the foremost concern to parents throughout our city and the world." And I say "the world" because this, like smart meters, is being rolled out globally. These are the only two technologies that I've ever noticed in my lifetime that have been rolled out globally. It's very strange to me. So given the time constraints, my focus will be on the dire health effects that these technologies represent. "In 1999, I was working as a healthcare analyst and was struck by the exponential rise in autism, which I felt should have resulted in a national health emergency in order to determine the cause or causes." But of course, that never happened. At the time, I thought the main cause was probably childhood vaccinations, which doubled in 1990. I know this because I worked for Michigan Peer Review, and that's what we did. We reviewed, you know, childhood vaccinations and other things like that. So I know that. Or it could have been the advent of GMO farming, which is based on the use of Roundup and non-medellian genetic modifications by Monsanto and Bayer with these seeds. Now GMO farming also exploded in the early 90s. That was about 30 years ago. "Today, I feel there may have been a third possibility, the increase in electromagnetic frequency radiation, or as I call it EMF radiation, from the exponential increase in cellphone purchases and cellphone use. It is possible that over vaccinations, GMO farming, and EMF radiation may all be working synergistically to undermine the health of our citizens. And there are other technologies that may also be contributing to the decline of health of American children and adults. In any case, human lifespan has actually decreased for the last three years in the United States. This is absolutely unprecedented. You would think that our health professionals would be curious enough to know, what the hell is going on here? You know? And it's not just sperm counts, and it's not just lifespan. All sorts of disease processes are going up in this country now. I don't know why, you know, I am a scientist, or I was a scientist, so I mean, I'm not going to speculate in what I can't prove, but we should be concerned. I'm also part of a global movement to stop the deployment of 5G antennas and smart meters. So today, I'm here to do what I'm encouraging activists around the planet to do, request city governments to convene these special study sessions to alert their communities about the dangers of the technologies. And ultimately, we want the deployment of 5G internet and smart meters to be stopped." Now, over the last year, you are seeing protests all over the world because it's being deployed all over the world. I just read an article today in Geneva where they just started deploying 5G. And people that were not affected by routers, or Wi-Fi, or anything else are now reporting that they're having severe headaches, nosebleeds, all sorts of things like this. And it just drives me nuts to think about, you know, why this is being done. I do have my theories. But the point is, both 5G and smart meters, they do not discriminate on the basis of color, or religion, or political affiliation. But they do discriminate on the basis of age. Young children with thinner skulls will be far more susceptible to cancer and other diseases from this EMF radiation and dirty electricity. Both technologies needlessly threaten the health and safety of our citizens. The effect of dirty electricity and EMF radiation are already causing electro sensitivity, cancer, and other disease processes. And that's even with 4G. For example, in March of 2019, the parents in ripened California successfully forced sprint to remove a cell tower on the premises of their public school, where eight of the students and teachers were diagnosed with cancer. Now, the reason that our citizens should be concerned is that there are reasons 5G will have a far greater health impact. The first of those reasons is these antennas are going to be set up every two to 10 homes throughout, not just the United States, but throughout the world. The second reason is the frequencies required by 5G have been documented to cause far greater negative health effects than current 4G technologies. This is because of the frequencies, it's because of how densely these devices are going to be placed. It's this whole internet of things where these idiots think we need somebody to tell us that we get, you know, we need to buy a new gallon of milk, you know, in our fridge. I'd rather have my health than know that I need to buy something, you know, and that's an invasion of my privacy. And the third thing, which is probably most important, is that unlike 4G, there is no way to minimize your exposure to the 5G radiation. I mean, in my home, we don't keep our phones by our beds. I turn off my router when I'm not using it. My Chrome key, I turn that off. Boy, I was surprised how much radiation that was giving off, and that wasn't even when I was using it. So currently, your cellphone, router, wireless phone operate under 4G. You can take protective measures. There is no way to protect yourself from 5G, as you cannot simply turn off the antenna, which will be one to five houses away from your home. Your home, workplace, and car will be bombarded by 5G EMF radiation 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and 365 days a year. There will be no way to protect your family members from 5G, period. It has also been estimated that homes closest to the antennas will result in property values dropping as much as 20%. Nobody is going to want to buy a house next to a 5G tower or antenna. On February 7th, 2019, U.S. Senator Richard Blumenthal, who I don't really like, raised concerns with the lack of any scientific research and data on the technology's potential health risks. At the hearing, members of the wireless industry admitted that no studies have yet been done on the health risks posed by the new 5G wireless technology. So essentially, the entire population of the United States and the world is going to be subjected to a massive lab experiment. I mean, do you not see how crazy this is? We are being relegated to the status of lab rats, and there seems to be no consideration for the precautionary principle. And I mean, when I was working in radiation physics, we dealt with radiated sources, you know? So we observe the precautionary principle, you know? We put those in lead boxes so that we were protected from the radiation. You're not going to be protected from this radiation. There's nowhere you're going to be able to go. There's nothing you're going to be able to do. So when I saw this, you know, this thing with Blumenthal, and the members of the FCC, they admit it right out. He said, you know, "What testing have you done?" He said, "We don't know of any testing that's been done." You're just going, "What the hell? You're going to deploy this across the entire United States? And you haven't tested it? I mean, that's crazy." Here are some of the milestones that led to this no choice on 5G for U.S. citizens. I mean, in September 26th, 2018, leaders of cities across the United States objected to a decision by the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, setting national limits on how local governments can regulate the installation. I mean, they took away the right to stop the installation. Then, in October 25th, 2018, President Trump, I voted for him, signed a presidential memorandum directing the Commerce Department to develop a long-term, comprehensive, national-spectrum strategy to prepare for the introduction of 5G. Then in Michigan, and that was the video I was going to play, because Sharon, I can't think of her last name offhand, but...
We can play it now if you want to.
Oh, can we? That would be great.
Play it right now or...
Oh, great, yeah, that would be great.
I believe.
I am going to skip many of the things I wanted to say because I didn't realize it was only five minutes. Wireless radiation has biological effects, period. This is no longer a subject for debate when you look at PubMed and the peer-reviewed literature. These effects are seen in all life forms: plants, animals, insects, microbes. In humans, we have clear evidence of cancer now, there is no question. We have evidence of DNA damage, cardiomyopathy, which is the precursor of congestive heart failure, neuropsychiatric effects. So 5G is not a conversation about whether or not these biological effects exist. They clearly do. 5G is a conversation about unsustainable healthcare expenditures. Why do I say this? We've been sitting on the evidence for EMR and chronic disease for decades. And now, we're seeing all these epidemics appearing. So diabetes is the first epidemic. I think most of you know the statistics. They're very scary. One in three American children will become diabetic in their lifetime, and if they're Hispanic females, the number is one in two. So what does this have to do with wireless radiation? Wireless radiation and other electromagnetic fields, such as magnetic fields and dirty electricity, have been clearly associated with elevated blood sugar and diabetes. That is what the peer-reviewed literature says. It is not opinion. The closer you live to a cell tower, the higher your blood glucose. That is based on hemoglobin A1C measurements. So the idea with small cells of putting the cells closer to people's homes and bedrooms, scientifically, is very dangerous. And from an economic perspective, it's dangerous. And you may not know this, I was shocked to find this out, but the way you create a model of diabetes in rats in the lab is by exposing them to 2.4 gigahertz. And this is not for long-term exposure. So, I don't have time to talk about the costs, but the huge problem with diabetes really is chronic kidney disease. End-stage renal disease, the worst complication of diabetes, leads to hemodialysis. Hemodialysis is an automatic qualification for Medicare. And if you don't qualify for Medicare, we still have to dialyze the patient. And the state ends up paying in many different instances. So renal failure is 1% of Medicare, but it takes up 7% of all Medicare expenditures. I don't have time to talk about this anymore, but once again, we have, so the other epidemics that clearly link from the science with electromagnetic radiation are related to mental health. And this is, this is straight from PubMed. This isn't my opinion, this is science, okay?
Dr. Mer... For those of us who aren't physicians, what is PubMed?
I'm sorry. It's just the, it's our National Library of Medicine. This is where you would go, this is just the peer-reviewed literature. So we have three epidemics that clearly, they're essentially one epidemic. We have deterioration of mental health in the United States. And if you look really at the science, what does it show? And these epidemics are our suicide epidemic, epidemics in violent shootings, and the opioid epidemic. And I don't have, five minutes is not the time to talk about this. This is in the peer-reviewed literature. I have a file to submit for the record. But these are facts, these aren't, and these are things that have just been glossed over by the wireless industry, and I really don't have time to talk about them in five minutes. I wish I did. But we need to examine our epidemics in the context of our EMF exposures. What does that mean? That means that the CDC, tracking these epidemics, needs to, we need to start measuring how much radiation are people being exposed to. And before we roll out 5G, and this means, there are four kinds of electromagnetic fields that we know are harmful to human health. So radiofrequency radiation, magnetic fields, dirty electricity, and electric fields, okay? Our exposure, any given person, and all humans are affected by EMFs, our given exposure has nothing to do with the research that my colleagues are going to cite, with the National Toxicology Program. That is an assessment of the risk of one cellphone in the near field, okay? What is our exposure? In a day? It's not one cellphone. It's cell phones, it's multiple wireless networks, it's smart meters, it's cell towers, it's this sandwich, and it all adds up. And this is a, this is a serious problem for occupational health, public safety, and personal safety. And I feel that it's irresponsible to be even talking about the internet of things and rolling out a new, untested technology when we're not even measuring what are our current exposures from the current networks.
Yeah, that's good. She did a great job, didn't she?
Yes, she did.
I'm going to kind of gloss over a few things. One of the best, if you want to do more research on the health things, the international appeal to "Stop 5G on Earth and Space" is a good place. This will hopefully be included, the link. "5G and smart meters are an existential threat to our health, privacy, and freedom." So if the link's there, you can look at it in more detail. But I'm just going to briefly go over all the problems that are caused by fifth-generation radiation. You've got alteration of heart rhythm, you've got altered gene expression, you've got altered metabolism, you've got altered stem cell development, they've got 15 studies on that, cancers, 16 studies on that. These are all peer-reviewed, by the way. Cardiovascular disease, 17 studies on that. Cognitive impairment, 18 studies on that. DNA damage, 19 studies on that. Impacts on general well-being, 20 on that. Increased free radicals, which cause diseases, 21 articles on that. Learning and memory deficits, 22 articles. Impaired sperm function and quality, and as I just told you, sperm counts has gone down 50% in the last 40 years. I would think that the health community would be concerned about that. Miscarriages, 24 studies on that. Neurological damage, 25 articles on that. Obesity and diabetes, 26 on that. And oxidative stress, 27 studies on that. There are actually thousands and thousands of studies. So, you know, all this is included, so I mean, you can go to these links, you can do your research. I'm going to just be quick about the other two things, because again, they're covered in here. But the second thing is how 5G and smart meters invade our privacy. Now, since 9/11, September 11th, 2001, the federal government has been normalizing the surveillances of its citizens. We now have 72 fusion centers that are aggregating what you do from multiple sources. So when you get pulled over by the local police, they have huge amounts of information in addition to your driving and criminal record. Our basically, rights are being eviscerated. Anybody that uses a cellphone, there's nothing you can do. They've been, they've done, they've tested this. You can turn off your phone, you can do whatever you want, it's still tracking you. And as soon as you turn back that phone on, it all gets uploaded. We are, everything, you know, it's like Sting, you know, every step you take will be watching you. And this is, this is becoming a real thing. Both smart meters and 5G make it possible to know everything you do in your home. Every appliance in your home has a signature that can be read and recorded by your smart meter. This isn't with an RFID chip. This is just a standard hair dryer, your refrigerator, even when you turn on your shower, it's going to know that, you know, the heater's going on, it's going to know what's going on. And 5G will actually allow the government to see where you are in your home. It will be actually able to see through the walls of your home. When I grew up, we were taught that our homes were our castles when it came to the Fourth Amendment. In other words, what we did in our homes was not the business of our government. But with both smart meters and 5G, the Fourth Amendment has been rendered into nonexistence. And so what did the utilities forget to tell us when they forced us to accept our smart meters? They forgot to tell you that they would be surveilling what you did in your home in real time and selling that information to third parties. This is happening. It's all in this article. But this is a $2.2 trillion market that we're talking about here. And DTE has been totally lying about, I mean, they haven't said anything about, this is happening. They are making a ton of money off our private data. And this could be sold to bad actors, local police. We don't even know who it's being sold to. And this is what's so crazy. So we're already well down, well down the line, as far as that goes. And it's only going to get worse, you know? And I think really what we need to do right now is, we're finally waking up to this stuff, and we need to kind of push it back. The third thing is the effect of 5G and smart meters on our freedom. I mean, what are they going to do with that data? Is your healthcare provider going to say, "Hey, we notice you're smoking cigarettes," or "We notice you're watching the wrong kind of videos," you know? I mean, I mean, don't you guys find this kind of creepy? This is already happening. This isn't something in the future. It's already happening. Then you look at China. China already has a 5G system up, and people are losing their homes, their apartments, they're being restricted from taking trains and transportation if their social credit score is not high enough. In other words, everything that they are doing is being scrutinized by the Chinese government. And they're using this to control their populace. You look at Detroit and Toronto. I don't know if you saw this the other week, they hauled this guy out of the city council meeting in Detroit because, you know, he was one of those that was opposed to the facial recognition, which again, this is all part, you know, you can't look at his one thing. The smart meters, the 5G technology are all part of this internet of things, as is the facial recognition. And this, you know, Orwell, 1984, Brave New World, Aldous Huxley, you know? I am, by the way, I consider my, I identify as a perennial hippie because, you know, Aldous Huxley wrote The Perennial Philosophy. And, you know, so I'm with that. But I mean, that's what's happening there.
I have a quick comment. We're all, you know, we're really concerned about this, and I'm an opponent to like the Bluetooth ear thing. This time we have left, what can we do here as a city council? Is this, are you here to ask us to do something for you, or just an informational thing here?
Well, you know, unfortunate, you know, like, I've been an activist all my life, you know? And I got a red file for my activity in the Vietnam War, you know? But we knew the big protests could change public opinion. We ended the Vietnam War. 68,000 Americans and a couple million Vietnamese later, but we did it. With the marijuana issue, I've been an advocate, I was invited to speak with Timothy Leary, you know? I'm not a dumb hippie, you know, some people might argue with that. But what we did is we rallied and we, you know, we did many, many initiatives. I've been involved in at least 10 initiatives. And finally, finally, you know, we can at least grow our own marijuana without any hassles from the government. It was the dumbest thing, the dumbest issue in my life I've ever thought was cannabis because it never hurt anybody. And I did LSD at 14, which I'm not recommending. The problem is, you're asking, "What can we do?" And this is the, this is why I'm so frustrated. I think, I started a global movement known as, it was International Drug Policy Day in 90. It turned into the Global Marijuana March in 2000. And today, last year, there were over 600 events throughout the world. I think that's what has to happen, because there are groups throughout the world beginning to do this. We have to organize. Unlike in 1990, we now have the internet. I just interviewed with an Israeli in Israel on Skype the other week. So we're beginning to do what can do. But what can you do? This is the frustration. The FCC, you know, when I was talking about this earlier, they, I don't, you know, if you guys know, or your corporate council has an idea, great. But essentially, my understanding of this, and I've studied this for a year, is I don't know that there's anything that you can do. I don't think you can stop, I mean, it would be great to let us know when they begin deploying these things, but I don't, I don't know what we can do. A couple of years back, I mean, a guy in Australia, he got a tank from one of his friends. He ran down, you know, 18 of these towers. That was the big 4G. But I'm not recommending that. I mean, I've never been for violence in my life, I'm not going to start now. But I don't know. I don't know. But I'll tell you this. This is not just an issue for government, this is a government, this is an issue for... This is a government-- this is an issue for everybody. I mean, I mean, look at all the things that our corporations have done to us over the years. Leaded gas, DES, which was a hormone they gave to women, caused a lot of problems, you know? Most recently, GMOs. For decades, you know, Monsanto was saying, "Oh, GMOs are just fine." I'd never bought that. And you also have to understand that the seeds are genetically modified. And when I say in a non-medellian way, I mean that they're just screwed with the genes. It's not like they're, you know, cross-pollinating different varieties of a plant. So anyway, the point being--
Because at this time, some of the council people have questions, and I know we're running short of time.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
At this time, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kane, good evening. I wanted to let you know, and I've done a lot of research on this. I've talked to different experts and scientists, and I agree. I think probably most of us would agree. There are concerns with 5G and health concerns. However, when you were talking about regulating, and that is a big industry and big money, and you're right, you have to organize people, right? But what your question was, well, what can the council do? And I'm going to tell you what the council can do would be pass a resolution. However, that would be a document that would simply petition the state because it has to be done on a grander scale. Do you see what I mean? I mean, if we said, "No 5G," that's by resolution to City of Dearborn Heights, is that realistic? Would that happen? You know, I mean, how can we regulate and control that? But you really have to go bigger where, you know, like you said, there's global, there's niche wide, there's statewide. You see what I mean? So that's really what the council body can do for you, though I do agree with you because I've done my research. But, you know, again, that's kind of what the options are. And you are absolutely correct where, you know, your local community activists can get involved. They could be active, you know, organizing and demonstrating, and that is certainly their right to do so. But that's kind of what I think your options are, with all due respect, you know, on that front. But your question was, "What can the city council do?" And I wanted to share with you what we can do was that resolution that, again, would be to petition the state.
I think anything that you can do is, you know, many drops wear away the stone, as they say. So anything you can do. I mean, even if-- I think the more communities that just say, "We got problems with this," that maybe it'll eventually catch fire and we'll do something. But I hate to be the harbinger of bad news, but I, like I said, I have been involved as an activist all my life. I have never seen anything this big. And when you read this article, I kind of got carried away yesterday. It's 26 pages. The Rockefellers, Rockefeller Foundation, the Ford Foundation, you know, Ford wants the driverless cars, completely dependent on 5G. The Rothschilds and Crown Castle, which is this international thing, and they've got their tentacles into every telecom, every utility, you know? They're buying up the poles. I have never seen such a monolithic opponent in my life. And from my aspect, you know, I've lost some battles, but I helped win some, you know? And the thing I keep telling people really is, you know, "All of us is all we need." I mean, this truly is an existential threat. And I just want to put it to you this way, you know, just to restate the obvious. The FCC and the telecoms and these corporations, they want to roll this out, and yet they admit that they have not tested the safety of this technology. Here's the last thing I want to say, and then you can ask me more questions if we have time. This costs me $180, and I recommend people get it because it gives you a firsthand view of exactly what happens when you're doing things, you know? Here's the creepy thing, and this creeps me out. You cannot-- this only goes up to, I think, 6 megahertz. The 5G is going to be like 4 to 100 megahertz or gigahertz or whatever. You can't buy a detector to detect these radiations for under $10,000. So when they flip the switch on this stuff and people start getting sick, we're not even going to know what's hitting us because unlike this, with 4G radiation, we are not going to be able to read and see what the levels of the 5G radiation is. I mean, you know, there are a lot of people that are saying this is a depopulation thing, you know? I entertain a lot of literature, but I don't buy a lot of it. But in the back of my mind, I sometimes wonder, "Why are they doing this?" And could there be, you know, some sub rosa agenda going on that maybe only a few people at the top know about, you know? Some people say that people get-- start getting sick, they're going to use it as an excuse to vaccinate people. They'll blame it on the vaccines. Now, I'm not anti-vax, by the way, but I'm just saying, this creeps me out. I've been involved in many issues over my life, and I'm more than willing to speak out. I just don't know how this ends, and it needs to end.
Okay, let's open up to more questions. Any more, Councilwoman Abella?
Just had a quick question. The only thing I had, and I've gotten all your emails. I know you've been sending us emails and--
I apologize for that.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine. I like reading that stuff. The only thing that I kind of, and I'm not saying you question you, but where you mentioned that there would be an antenna for every two homes.
Two to 10.
But it seems like quite extreme, quite honestly.
You said "homes." Homes. Did you say "homes"?
Homes.
Houses.
Every two to 10 homes.
Every two to 10 homes.
Yes.
Right? There'd be an antenna, and yet there's been no testing, and yet there's been-- honestly, I've seen very little information on it in the national media. I mean, if you search for it, you'll find it. But it just, and I just had a hard time, honestly, grasping that data, that it's going to be every two houses will be an antenna put in, and yet our government wouldn't be out there telling us, "Hey, this is coming."
You should look at who owns-- you should look at who owns the major media in this country now.
Okay.
And I think you'll find the answer.
Any other--
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
Yeah, but, you know, this body, it has no jurisdiction at all over telecommunications. There's a state group that an attorney at law firm downtown, Kitchabier, founded regarding communities getting paid for the right of way for gas lines, for telecommunications, and so forth. But yeah, I mean, this body has just no jurisdiction at all over this issue.
Oh, and I agree with you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you're absolutely right.
Okay, at this time, any more questions? Let's open it up to the audience. Come up to the microphone if you've got a question, please.
Tell them it's about this, not about it.
I know. Don't worry about it.
Thank you, Boos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Prollock. I want to make a comment to what this gentleman said, okay? It's this. If it comes down to that, the people need to get together when that time comes, when your health insurance one is raised, march down on Washington, sit on the doorsteps, and you'll get something resolved. Amen.
Thank you. Any other further comment from the audience?
Dana Parrish, 5614, Grindly Park. It was about the first part of the study session. Had to do with the concrete company that did the work, the FEMA work, the area of Hanover between Grindly Park and-- the street escapes me now. I gave the council at the 25th of last month--
Madison.
Thank you. Madison. Of last month, I gave you all some photographs of the cement work there. And I was told last fall that it was going to be corrected. It was some pretty bad work. I was told last year that it was late in the season. It was going to be corrected this spring. And I've been down there, and it still hasn't been corrected. Now, I'm not going to say what the name of the company was because I don't know exactly what the name of the company was, but the company that's responsible for it should have stepped up to the plate because I understand they're still working for the City of Dearborn Heights. They should step up to the plate and get that concrete fixed. They got federal money, FEMA money, grant, City of Dearborn Heights, and hopefully we get another grant for the rest of these folks that are flooded out. Let's get it made right. The city needs to step in and kick these people where they need to be kicked and get them up to the plate and get it fixed.
Thank you. Any further comment from the audience? Okay, that concludes our study session for tonight. Please take a five-minute recess, and we will start with our regular council meeting.